Just to be clear, he is right. We'll just call him if he gets here.
I'll call him now.
Okay. Begin the meeting, please, at 3:30. Item number two. Safety message invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Ma'am, I need to confirm the quorum.
Sorry about that. Go ahead.
We have yourself, the vice chair, the mayor, trustee Steen. We have a quorum.
All right. Thank you. Sorry about that. So excited to start the meeting. Item number two.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Chad Hoopengartner. I'm vice president, financial planning. I work with our finance team in financial services with Mr. Corey Kuchinsky. We first wanted to review the evacuation procedures so that we're prepared to be safe in the event of an emergency. If you hear the fire alarm, follow the instructions announced through the P A system. If asked to evacuate, use the glass doors exiting out of the boardroom to the outside. If that door is blocked, use the back door. Verbally alert others in the room and evacuate. Then move to the main parking lot in the front of the building or the A T and T parking lot over the McCullough or Brooklyn bridges. In the event of a situation like this, our security team will be monitoring the situation and will notify the appropriate emergency services and team members. We also have employees nearby who are trained to administer first aid if needed. Safety is a top priority at CPS Energy. And while we hope this never is needed, we want to be sure we are always ready. Please join me in invocation. We thank you for the many blessings you have freely given to each of us. And we ask your presence to guide this meeting of the CPS Energy Board of Trustees. Provide them with the knowledge, compassion, and wise counsel needed as they discuss the business matters on the agenda today. Help us all to remember that we are stewards acting on behalf of our customers and provide us with the grace to serve all people well. We ask this in your name. Amen. Now join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number three, public comment.
Thank you. Public comment provides an opportunity for members of the public to share thoughts on posted agenda items for this meeting. We will invite pre-registered speakers to speak. They may only address the board on CPS Energy-related business listed on the posted agenda. Speakers should state their first and last name, the organization or group they represent, and the agenda item they will speak about. For this meeting, we have five in-person speakers. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak. Thomas, will you please cue the timer? Our first speaker is Henrietta LaGrange, followed by Danny Zimmerman.
Thank you for allowing me to be here. Two minutes is not enough time, but I did take a poll. Everywhere I went, I would ask people on the race. And a lot of them would say, we may not like it, but we understand. So we don't like it, but we understand that it has to be done. The only thing is, your second one, I think we are getting a little ahead of ourselves. But first of all, I want to thank Mr. Garza, Rudy, because San Antonio has done a 360 since he's been the new C E O. People call me that they see the difference. If they call that a light or whatever needs to be addressed, he's addressing it. But first of all, let me take the women, the leadership. Janie Gonzalez, Francine Romero. I love seeing you there because it also gives me hope. I know that I've been a chairman too, and it is not easy being a chairman. So, Mr. Steen, also, thank you for being here. And I'm sorry, Dr. Lackey is not here. And the mayor, also, thank you for being here. But let's not forget the people that stand behind us. And that's all the CPS workers, because they're the ones that keep us standing up straight and having pride in CPS Energy. But also, I would like to address the mayor. I can't change the name of San Antonio, but he can do a proclamation and name one day, Henrietta LaGrange Day. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker is Danny Zimmerman, followed by Martin Gutierrez.
Good afternoon, Mayor Nuremberg, Chairwoman Gonzalez, Vice Chair, Dr. Romero, Trustees, Dr. Mackey. It looks like he's unable to be here today. Mr. Steen, thank you for giving us the opportunity to come and weigh in on the CPS Energy proposed rate increase. My name is Danny Zimmerman. I am an executive principal and CFO for Cleary Zimmerman Engineers. I'm also the chairman of the North San Antonio Chamber of Commerce. And I'm here speaking on behalf of the North Chamber. Ahead of the Thanksgiving break, we sent each of you an early letter of support. And again today, we want to strongly encourage you to support the proposed rate increase of 4.25%. We remain committed to this position and ask for your support and approval. CPS Energy remains a foundational asset to our community's economic success. With the region's expected population surge of 30% by 2030, I know we're all feeling it on the roads. My wife complains regularly, and I tell her not to because it fuels our lifestyle. The metro area is also projected to top 4 million by 2050. And the city's expanded, expanding energy infrastructure and innovative solutions. Needs must be ready to meet the increasing demands that will only keep growing over time because this area is just so popular. We believe the effects of population growth and economic development are important and worth the investment in the long view. Businesses need available and readily available power to succeed and to grow and for businesses to move here. We were here before you a year ago, providing testimony, public testimony, supporting the now-approved P2 blend power generation plan. As a recognized leader in renewable energy, it's critical to commit to financing and investing in CPS's continued operations that are focused on power generation, resiliency, technology, security, among other elements. As our letter stated, CPS remains, in our opinion, a good steward of our trust and with your leadership, continues to fulfill its commitment to making progress and improvements while maintaining financial stability. The proposed rate increase is less than originally projected. See, my time is running out. As business leaders, we understand that short-term business and/or long-term business and economic success is contingent upon making carefully vetted, hard decisions. CPS Energy has done, their leadership has done a good job, and we just want to encourage you again to support this rate increase. Thank you for your commitment to Rudy Garza and his team and also to this board.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker is Martin Gutierrez, followed by Jeff Webster.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Gonzalez, CPS Energy Board of Trustees. My name is Martin Gutierrez. I'm director of government relations for the San Antonio Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, who is comprised of 900 members, the majority of which are small locally-owned businesses. On behalf of our more than 900 members, I am here today to express our support for the CPS Energy proposed base rate increase of 4.25%. Reliable energy is essential for the continuity of business operations. We strongly believe the proposed rate increase balances the necessary investments CPS Energy must make to remain financially strong while maintaining some of the lowest rates in Texas. The necessary investments in security, infrastructure, resiliency, technology, security, and their people will help CPS Energy continue to provide affordable and reliable power for San Antonio residents and small businesses. While we are supportive of the rate increase, we are concerned about the impact on small businesses in San Antonio. Post-pandemic, small businesses continue to deal with record inflation, supply chain disruptions, and labor challenges. This rate increase will be another challenge they face, which will directly impact their bottom line and for some, result in increased operational cost. We do believe that incremental increases to make the necessary investments is a balanced approach that is mindful of the small businesses in San Antonio. With these considerations, the Hispanic Chamber is pleased to support the CPS Energy proposed base rate increase, which will allow CPS Energy to invest in their operations that will benefit our community for generations to come. Thank you for the time.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker is Jeff Webster, followed by Katie Harvey.
Good afternoon. I want to thank you all for the opportunity to be here today. My name is Jeff Webster. I am the two-day-on-the-job president and CEO of the Greater San Antonio Chamber of Commerce. But I do have to say, this subject is not new to me. I was here a year ago, was brought up. We talked about resources for CPS as the policy chair for the chamber to speak. But you know, you've heard some great comments from my friends at the Hispanic Chamber and the North Chamber, and I'm not going to reiterate it. I have a written statement that the chamber will be sending out to you, hitting on all those fine points that those gentlemen have supported. But I want to be clear. The Greater San Antonio Chamber stands in support of this rate increase. Do we look forward to a rate increase? No. What we look forward to is surety, resiliency, economic growth, and a commitment to our community. I, as some of you know, have set in some of your seats and had to make these kind of tough votes. And I know how hard it can be. As a former council member, when you vote on these kind of things, it's tough. And it's tough to hear people say, I'm going to struggle with a $5 bill increase. The value I know is, I know what CPS and this city has done over the years to work with our community and help those in need to make sure the right things are done to protect the innocent and the poor. At the same time, the business community, we need to support growth and economic development because what pays those bills and that resiliency and that surety is jobs and economic growth. I cannot go out and visit with companies and speak on behalf of our community if we can't assure them we have power and resiliency. I remember my house on that cold winter day. I remember my house when we had rotating brownouts. But the commitment from this organization and our city to make sure and invest in the future of our city helps prevent those kind of things and will help grow our economic base. So Rudy, I thank you and your staff for being diligent. Like always, I shared with you, we always look for the city and any of our utilities to do the best to reduce costs, to hopefully mitigate some of those future increases. I know you're going to do that every day. We ask you continue to be diligent on expenses and costs. With that, know the chamber stands with you on this raise. And thank you very much for your time today. Appreciate you.
Thank you for your input. Our last speaker is Katie Harvey.
Board of Trustees, thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Katie Harvey. I'm C E O of K G B Texas Communications and this year's chairman of the Greater San Antonio Chamber of Commerce. To reiterate what Jeff said, but keeping it very tight, the Greater San Antonio Chamber of Commerce supports CPS's proposed rate increase of 4.25%. We do support the reinvestment in the infrastructure of the utility for resiliency and reliability. The business community also supports CPS's investment in increasing its generational capacity as our community continues to track of one of the fastest-growing cities in the nation. Creating certainty around CPS's finances will also help to maintain the utility's strong credit rating, which results in more affordable energy for all of our community. We also support the rate increase in 2027, provided that it does not exceed 5.5%. Thank you for all the work that has gone into this and appreciate your leadership very much, Rudy. Thank you all.
Thank you for your input. That was our last registered speaker.
Thank you. Shannon, if you could please, Dr. Mackey, if you could acknowledge that.
Yes, ma'am. As of 3:39 PM, all trustees were present.
Thank you very much. Item number four, which is chair's remark. I would like to just open with first wishing my mom a happy birthday. Today's her 72th birthday. I'm sure she's going to get upset that I mentioned 72. But happy birthday, Mom, and thank you for all the great birthdays you gave me, and I'm hoping you have the best birthday today. On that note, again, good afternoon. Thank you, all of you who are present and those of you who are listening online. First, I'd like to thank all of you who have participated by sharing your voice and valuable feedback in different mechanisms, whether it was attending a meeting, whether it was a B session attendance, whether it was you participating in a committee, whether it was you speaking to us these past couple of months. Thank you for that valuable feedback and your voice. I also want to thank again, let our committee know that we have our customers at the forefront of all that we do as a board. It is our responsibility to guide this organization through the energy transformation while we remain focused on growing our customer needs. I look forward to the discussion today with my colleagues. On that note, if we can go ahead and proceed to the next item. Which is item number six, a base increase in multi-year rate plan and regulation asset request for approval.
And just a quick correction, this is agenda item five.
Five, yes, five, sorry.
So, Madam Chair, as my team gets ready to get going, I've just got a few comments I want to make to lead into the conversation. Two years ago, when I took over CPS Energy as a leader, we were in a really tough spot. We don't take lightly, nor is it easy, asking for rate support. It is a difficult proposition and, you know, but it's necessary at times to ensure the long-term, you know, stability of our organization. As our board, thank you for leaning in with us and providing guidance and leadership. We wouldn't be here if this board didn't provide the direction that we need and the alignment that we need to do our jobs. We have a plan. That plan will get us, provide us a pathway to the future. Our plan is Vision 2027. We are well on the pathway to implementing the things that we've discussed as priorities for CPS Energy. This request will go a long way to helping us get there and continuing the momentum we've developed over the last two years. To my team, I want to say thank you for working hard and doing the work it takes to present a request of this nature. Again, it is not easy, and nobody sees the weeks and months y'all have put into this, but I see it. And I appreciate you. And that really goes to the entire organization and to city staff and our partners over at the city equally. And y'all have done a lot of work to challenge us in the ways that was necessary to arrive at a request that I think is reasonable and protects affordability and allows us to continue to be the utility this community expects of us. So, board members, thank you all for your direction and your leadership, and I look forward to our conversation today.
Thank you, Rudy.
Good afternoon. I'm Elena Ball, CPS Energy's chief strategy officer. Today, we have a number of items that we're going to discuss in our presentation. This is our agenda set forth for this presentation. First up, I would give a briefing on our multi-year strategy, as well as discuss our community commitments that we've executed on since our last rate request. At that point in the presentation, I'll turn it over to Corey Kuchinsky, who is our CFO, and he will take the group through the remainder of the presentation. So to set the stage for our multi-year strategy, I think it's important to share that we are in a period of rapid transition at both CPS Energy as well as in our industry. We have a need to modernize our systems and our infrastructure, both for our current and our future needs of our customers. As was mentioned, both by our C E O Rudy, as well as some of the public speakers, we are experiencing continued growth in our community, as well as shifts in new technologies across virtually every aspect of our business. As Rudy mentioned, our Vision 2027 is the basis for our strategy and our business plans. And as we look out to 2027 and beyond, our multi-year strategy is focused on four key areas. The first key area is our generation plan. We're committed to meeting our region's energy growth needs reliably while transitioning our generation fleet to cleaner sources of energy. We have over 3,000 megawatts of units that will either be retired or repowered with natural gas in the next five years. We have begun to implement a generation plan that was adopted by the board, following a very interactive process with the community and the rate advisory commission. These diverse types of technologies that we are investing in will accelerate our decarbonization while also keeping up with our growth and reliability needs. Also in our multi-year strategy, our two companion activities, our digital transformation and our customer experience. As was mentioned earlier, everything that we're doing has our customers at the heart of it. Our digital transformation is really establishing a modern system that can allow us to offer new products and services to our customers, as well as eliminate some risks that we have with a core business system that's over two decades old. With this multi-year program, we will modernize our technology, improve our cybersecurity, as well as improve our customers' access to information. In the future, this digital transformation will enable us to offer new products and rate designs that our customers are asking us for. The digital transformation program is a significant undertaking and will take several years to implement. However, we are already underway. We are also focused on supporting growth. Our electric system is seeing 145 megawatts of growth annually. That's equivalent to about 30,000 households. So we are focused on expanding not only our generation, but also our transmission, distribution, and gas systems to support reliable operations and to enable more distributed energy resources, such as electric vehicles, customer-sided generation, and energy storage. We also have begun to seek out grant funding opportunities, as well as identify new revenue streams to help defray some of our costs. This multi-year strategy will bring about a significant amount of positive change for our customers and our community. We understand that we must manage these changes at a very careful pace so that we minimize the cost impact to our customers, paying especially close attention to the most vulnerable in our community. Just like we did in our last rate request, we have clear commitments we are making to our community. Here are a number of commitments that we made at our last rate request. I'm going to touch on a few, and you all have seen this slide before, but welcome any questions. One of the areas that we committed to in addition to the generation plan was approving a new sustainable Tomorrow Energy Program, or STEP. In partnership with the city and city council, we did get an approved new STEP program. This program will reduce 410 megawatts of demand and will weatherize up to 16,000 homes and 20,000 multifamily units. We collected community input. We also used that input as the basis for our plan. We completed an operational efficiency review that went through every aspect of the utility's operation, which was a commitment we made in our last rate request, and are in the process of reviewing and implementing up to all 92 recommendations. We've stabilized staffing. While that may not sound exciting to a lot of people, we had reached staffing levels that were getting very difficult to serve our customers with the high service levels that we expect. We have stabilized staffing and hired over almost 800 people, and the majority of those were frontline workers who ultimately are providing the service to our customers. So we will continue to be transparent and clear in our communications about our progress in each of these four strategic areas. Now I will turn it over to Corey Kuchinsky, our CFO, for the next part of the presentation.
Thank you, Elena, and good afternoon, Chairwoman. Good afternoon, trustees. Good to be back again. So, just as Elena mentioned, you know, we are very forward-looking in this discussion and want to make sure that that remains kind of in focus as we discuss. So this rate request that we've been discussing for the last few weeks is merely a continuation of CPS Energy's journey into the future that we laid out. And as Rudy mentioned and alluded to, you know, this is not a decision that we take lightly. It is something that we have spent countless hours. And thank you, as Rudy mentioned, thank you to the teams that have spent the hours working on this request and also over at the city side as well for their help. So wanted to acknowledge those. On the next slide, it's information that we've seen before, kind of recapped for those that may be listening for the first time. The request in front of us today is a 4.25 base rate increase. It is going to generate approximately $85 million in annual revenue. The average bill impact for a customer who is not on any assistance program is going to be $4.45. And for customers who do income qualify for the affordability discount program, our aim here with this recommendation was to offset that increase by about half, so they would see about a $2.42 averaging increase on their bill. I will note, and we've talked about this at prior meetings, and we're not going to go into it too much today, if you do not qualify for this one particular program, there are countless other programs that we offer in addition to our teams when you call, being able to connect you with other organizations. So I'll note that again. And when I speak about the phrase "base rate," I am referring specifically, if you're looking at your bill, to the service availability charge and the energy charge components of your bill. This rate request does not include those other line items you may see on your bill. We do have an appendix slide in the back, which I'll be happy to answer any questions on, that does clarify where on your bill you can see these changes occurring. So on the next slide, we have spoken to this board at length, the benefits to the community that comes with this investment. And for those, again, who may be listening for the first time, I will spend just a moment recapping the four key areas where this rate request will be invested in and what, from a customer's perspective, you can see. And I think first and foremost, one of the consistent feedback we get from our customers is that they look for reliable and resilient power. And so it's not just that the power's there, but if we do have an outage, that we can bounce back quickly. As an example, over the last two years, we spent approximately $90 million reinforcing our power plants for extreme conditions and reinforcing our lines. Much of that work, our customers cannot see, but is behind the scenes, and this investment goes towards ensuring that we sustain that. From a technology perspective, and Elena alluded to this, you know, we are looking to make investments that enable customers to interface with us in a manner that they've asked for. And as she mentioned, new products, new services, all those things, we want to make sure that we can enable for our customers. And behind the scenes, you know, ensuring that our technology that is controlling the power flow across our entire city and controlling our power plants is safe and protected from threats. Talked about, and this was also talked about, you know, in previous meetings, is keeping up with system growth. We all benefit from a power grid that's upgraded and has enough generation to support all of our customers. This isn't just new customers. This is also about reinvesting in older areas as well when they grow or just need new infrastructure. We all invest, we all benefit from this. And ultimately, service to our customers is a function of having the trained folks that can do the work. As was mentioned in previous meetings as well, it can take three to seven years to get folks trained up out in the field. You know, our folks don't just show up one day and get in a bucket truck and go out there in storms or go out there in extreme conditions. It takes a long time to get our folks ramped up and in the pipeline. And with the impending retirements we have with our workforce, getting going on that and sustaining that investment is necessary. So that's a brief recap on the $85 million and kind of the key areas of investment. So I want to hit on this conversation on past due accounts in a manner that we have not done yet. We often refer to the total amount past due as $175 million. That headline number is down from closer to $210 million of a year ago, which we've referenced. So progress has been made. That is great. But I wanted to step through this because there's more to the story underneath. Looking at this slide from left to right, the biggest point, and I've made this before, and Deanna has made this as well, is that about $83 million of our total of 175 is actually on payment plans, which means you've got someone who's actively engaged, you've got someone that is paying money to CPS Energy for the service that they've gotten. Deanna's team, our customer service team, over the last year has been laser-focused on getting these customers on plans that they can stick to. And we have an industry-high stick-to rate, so to speak, of customers who are on those on those accounts. You know, in a year's time, or a little over a year, that $83 million number, used to be in the range of $5 to $10 million in the past. So just to put that in context, that's an incredible effort that her team is doing, is getting folks lined up on something that they can afford. Point number two is in the middle. There are close to $43 million of inactive accounts. Now, these are dollars that are typically in some stage of collection process. And as we've mentioned before and talked about, we have strict requirements that we have to go through to collect on amounts that are owed to us before we can actually just write them off. So this bucket will likely be written off over time as we go through that extensive process. But at this point, the step that would be taken is just an accounting exercise that will occur over time. The final point, and probably the main point, and that's why it's in the largest box on the right-hand side, is how much then should we be focusing on and really talking about? And that's the nearly $50 million on the right-hand side. And this is where Deanna's team is, the customer service team, is the most focused on. These are active accounts. These are customers in our community that are receiving our service. They're active. But in many cases, they are past due, or they're past due enough to actually be eligible for disconnection. And, you know, one of a few things can happen for folks in this bucket. The first one is that Deanna's team can get to them, whether she's doing block walk-in or out at a consumer, a customer fair. whether she's doing block walk-in or out at a consumer, a customer fair. She can get them hooked up on a payment plan. And what that means is they'll go from that far-right bucket all the way over to the left bucket, which means they're now on a payment plan, which is good. The other option is, well, we get to them and, you know, we have to disconnect them. And in 95% of the time, that individual who does get disconnected is going to call us right back same day, call her team in the call center, and make a payment and get on a plan, which means 95% of those folks are getting in that left-hand bucket as well. The other 5% are going to go into the middle. They'll probably be in some level of collections, and eventually we'll have to go down that path of writing off. Now, the other thing to note, and we've talked about this, is weather permitting. Deanna's team is also disconnecting approximately 10,000 customers per month. If we're wondering how that compares, that is above pre-COVID levels. So all in all, it really is a combination of kind of compassion and diligence mixed with a level of enforcement, and our teams are doing the best to try to balance those two elements over the last couple of years. So that all being said, the last point that I've made before is that those amounts on payment plans are in fact included in the future forecasts that we have put out there for our rate requests. So those are accounted for in that manner. So past due accounts, they're not zero. They never will be. But the focus number of past due accounts shouldn't also be 175 million either. It should be understood that we're not unique in having these challenges to manage through, but should also be known that our teams that are getting out there are working as hard as anybody in the industry, and they're getting impressive results, and that's what this slide is showing. Now, this next slide is a slide that we're very familiar with. This is how our electric and gas bills compare to other major markets within the state of Texas. Again, we're using this benchmark view, which is from readily available data that we're able to get across the state at standard usage levels that are used for comparison purposes. And to the question you asked at the last meeting, Mayor, when you tack on the four-and-a-quarter request, you can see that our bills still remain very competitive. In this instance, the lowest in these major markets. And, you know, wanted to take the opportunity to point that out for those who may be listening for the first time. So on this next slide, the impact of our financial metrics with the four-and-a-quarter increase are shown here. Now, there's no change from the last meeting on the ratios for the columns that have fiscal '25 and fiscal '26. What is new on this slide is showing the latest estimate over on the left for this fiscal year, fiscal year '24. Now, you know, the punchline is, there's really no surprise here. These metrics are better than we had forecasted at the beginning of the year. But we spoke about that at the previous meeting as to why. We talked about how we saw strong wholesale sales over this summer. I also spoke about how we were thinking of applying those additional dollars. And ultimately, I spoke about how that performance contributed to the reduced request of four-and-a-quarter instead of our previously planned 5.5% that we've been talking about from a couple of years ago. So the strength that you see in this latest estimate is in fact what is carrying forward in the future years. And not to be a spoiler alert for the December 18th meeting, when we do our quarter three update, but these are going to be the same latest estimate numbers that we will show for that standard, that standard review as well. So point number one, this year's performance has underpinned all of our rate request forecasts that we have discussed. The other element that I'd point out, it may look like our metrics are going down, but the point is, they remain competitive and in the ranges that will allow our borrowing costs to remain competitive, which is the ultimate point of maintaining these elements, these financial metrics. And the other question that you may ask is, you know, why don't we stay at today's levels? They're pretty high levels that we haven't seen in the past. The answer is what I said earlier. We do not need to be at these high levels in order to still borrow competitively, which is the end objective of what financial health does for us. If we did in fact try and stay at those higher levels, what it would mean for our customers is we would need a higher rate increase. And if we did want to keep an elevated financial metrics like that, it means that we'd have to take money out of our customers' pocket, and we'd have to park it on the sidelines just so that we could say we have additional financial cushion. And that just doesn't make sense to pull money out of our customers' pockets and not have it go to work. And so this is us putting our money to work while still maintaining the competitiveness that we have in the financial markets from a borrowing perspective. So the other item that I talked about, the last board meeting that we've heard also over at city council, was a regulatory asset that we will also be asking for approval on. I spent some time distinguishing how this is different than the conversation we had two years ago. The key point on this is highlighted. This change, this regulatory asset, does not increase the cost of, to any of our customers, and it's not going to increase the customer bill. That's kind of point one. The other point that I'll stress that I didn't hit as much last time was this approach that we're talking about has benchmarked, has been benchmarked rather, against peer utilities. We've determined it to be a best practice, and we've also taken this recommendation in front of our external auditors to ensure that they've reviewed it. And we've gone through all of that. Ultimately, this is regulatory accounting. We are allowed to do regulatory accounting, but it does require a different level of approval, which is why we're having this separate conversation both here at the Board of Trustees and we'll have it over at city council as well. So again, the Board of Trustees, you have seen this slide multiple times, and it supports the conversation that we have had about being future-focused and having a multi-year rate plan that supports, what Elena talked about at the beginning, a multi-year strategy. So that discussion is consistent from two years ago, and it remains true today. You can see, we currently have forecasted in fiscal '27 up to 5.5%. But again, all forecasts are subject to change based on real-life performance and outcomes. So as I wrap up here, you know, the last couple of years, and Rudy has mentioned this before, it's been about stabilizing CPS Energy and getting us focused at looking ahead to the future. So in order to continue down that path and achieve all the goals that we've discussed at length with the Board of Trustees and the community, continuing support with the resources to actually get the job done is really critical. So I appreciate the time, Chairwoman Gonzalez, and I appreciate the time to all of the trustees. So with that, I will turn it over to you, Chair, for the final request for approval for these two items. Thank you.
Okay, and I just want to make sure. These will be two votes, two separate votes. I just want to make sure that all trustees understand that. So we will now move to vote on each recommended item separately. Do I have a motion to approve the 4.25 base rate increase?
Is there a motion?
The motion first, and then is there...
And I just want to clarify. They're listed in order, so is there a motion to implement the regulatory asset for employee benefits accounting? We'll take first. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
I'll second the motion. Is there a discussion now? Mr. Steen?
Just to clarify, this is just on the regulatory asset.
Be two separate votes, sir. It's important that I believe there should be two separate votes. Did you have any discussion on that?
No, ma'am.
Any discussion on that item? Get a roll call?
Go ahead and poll the trustees. Trustee Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Trustee Steen?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Chair?
Yes.
Chair? Motion to approve the regulatory asset carries?
Okay. Then I will move, sorry, to vote on the recommended rate increase of 4.25 base rate. Is there a motion?
I move to increase the base rate by 4.25%.
Is there a second? A second by Dr. Mackey. Open for discussion. Mr. Steen?
I've got a fairly, fairly, all right. Let me say that... So I've been placed in a difficult position today. And let me begin by expressing my disappointment with so many of the decisions made by CPS Energy over the last two years, that is, since the last base rate increase of 3.85% was approved January 10th, 2022. Please put up Slide 8. From a financial point of view, I'm disappointed with the intractable customer debt situation where the latest numbers provided as indicate the figure is at 175.5 million with 193,000, 193,000 or 23% of CPS Energy's residential customers in arrears. I began sounding the alarm about this in early 2022, and despite our CEO's optimistic assurances at that time that it would soon be cleared up, we're worse off today than we were then. As I pointed out repeatedly, this account receivable situation is a clear signal of how financially distressed almost a quarter of our residential customers are, which is a critical fact to keep in mind during rate hike deliberations. So please put up Slide 10. From a big-three metrics point of view, I'm disappointed CPS Energy's debt capitalization ratio, which is our leverage metric and where lowers better, continues to exceed the 60% threshold and dismayingly is projected to increase to 67.9% in fiscal year 2029, even with the planned every-two-year rate hikes baked in. And Mr. Kaczynski, you can correct me if I've misstated that, but I believe I got that information from a five-year forecast version of metric charts that you provided via email on November 26th.
Yes, as I've mentioned, the debt capitalization ratio, we project going up in the future, and that aligns with the period of high investment that we're talking about. And in conjunction with that, though, I have also said the other two metrics, which have a little higher weighting with the rating agencies, we have focused on keeping those in the strong area. So they all work together, not individually. But you are correct, sir, on the debt capitalization ratio. We do have that trending upwards. Over the next decade, that coincides with the approximate $14 billion in investment that we need to make in support of our generation plan.
Thank you, Mr. Kaczynski. Also, please note, our day's cash on hand, CPS Energy's liquidity metric, where higher is better, continues its descending trajectory. From a CPS Energy Tier One metrics point of view, I'm disappointed that last fiscal year, the company's overall score was 10 out of 16. That is a 63, which is a D, on what's often referred to as CPS Energy's report card, and that the company's reaction to that score was not to take this as a challenge to try even harder and perform better this fiscal year, but instead to lower expectations, that is, move the goalpost closer. I want to stress that we should at all times and in every way be striving for excellence and not accept or abide mediocrity. From a governance point of view, I'm disappointed by the process, or more accurately, the lack of process, when our permanent CEO was selected in September of last year and by the dismantling of our senior executive compensation program that's contributed to the decimation of our senior leadership team, with CPS Energy in recent years having lost seven of its eight highest-ranking representatives, seven of its eight highest-ranking executives. The growing financial burden that this proposed 4.25% rate hike will place on CPS Energy customers has been brought about by spending decisions recommended by management and approved by a majority of this board. And just two examples. The first example, in May of last year, CPS Energy had the opportunity to ease the financial pressure on its customers by at a minimum pausing the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Initiative called STEP, which was originally a 10-year program that staff announced had reached its goals two years before. Because this STEP charge, or what some have dubbed the STEP tax, represents an average of 3 to 4.5% of a customer's bill, suspending the program would have, for many customers, essentially negated the 3.85% increase implemented March 1st, 2022. And granted, there'd been a lag, but this would have happened. Nevertheless, it was decided to plow ahead with it, notwithstanding that I, as well as plurality of the RAC members and three city council members favor to pause. The cost of extending this program was pegged at $70 million a year for five years, or $350 million, this on top of the $800 million already spent on the program. Unbelievably, CPS Energy is now on track to spend $1 billion on STEP. My second example is a generation plan that was adopted by this board on a 4-1 vote earlier this year, specifically on January 23rd, 2023. In the midst of significant financial stress, both on the company and on our customers, for reasons related to deadlines set forth in the Paris Climate Accords and the City of San Antonio's 2019 Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, CAP, this board decided to close convert our remaining coal-fired plants. Following the recommendation of management, this board agreed to shutter the Spruce One coal plant by the end of 2028 and to convert the Spruce Two coal plant to run on natural gas by 2027. But focusing on the closure Spruce Run, let's recall it was placed in service in 1992 with the expectation that it would operate until 2047. Thus, the board's January 23rd decision, it will be shut down some 20 years early. The financial people call this stranding an asset, and the financial impact on CPS Energy will not be insignificant. Further, shutting down Spruce One will remove 466 megawatts of base load power and seriously crimp CPS Energy's ability to sell excess power in the wholesale market. Recall that earlier this year, we made $200 million selling power in the wholesale market, four times the $50 million that was budgeted. And now we're moving along a path that will wreak havoc on CPS Energy's ability to do this in the coming years. As a former longtime CPS Energy employee characterized this plan to me, he said, "Taking out this 566 megawatts is shooting ourselves in the foot." And it should also be noted that Spruce Two's 178 megawatts will be unavailable during the years it will not be in operation while the conversion to natural gas takes place. Now, consider the example of Austin Energy and its Fayette Power Project, a coal-fired power plant near La Grange, put into service in 1980, making it 12 years older than CPS Energy's Spruce One coal plant. In 2020, the Austin City Council adopted an emissions reduction plan that called for its city-owned utility, Austin Energy, to shutter its portion of the Fayette Coal Plant by the end of 2022. That shutdown goal was missed. And last August 17th, Austin Energy made $11 million from that plant that one day. So to repeat, $11 million in one day. So in an August public meeting, Austin Energy's general manager said it was time for, quote, "course correction," close quote, to reevaluate how quickly Austin will get off coal power. And Austin Energy spokesman summarized it this way, and I'm quoting, "Not having the coal plant revenues to offset costs would mean those millions of dollars would be passed through to Austin Energy's customers." As far as being generally disappointed with how CPS Energy has been managed in recent years, I have one additional point to make. There was a time from 2019 to 2021, a period of three years, when without fail, at every single monthly board meeting, it was on the agenda that the board received a presentation on how CPS was cutting costs and saving money. This fostered a company culture of belt-tightening and financial prudence. Regretfully, in January of 2021, that monthly agenda item disappeared, and the culture seemed to shift from saving money to finding more and more ways to spend money. Unfortunately, discussion of how all these spending commitments are going to be paid for has not always been front and center. It's how we got to where we are today, not only evaluating a 4.25% base rate increase that's currently before us, but getting locked into base rate increases every two years for the foreseeable future. It's something I want our customers to understand when they read about monumental and ambitious programs and ideas. Make no mistake, ultimately, you're going to have to fund them, and over the coming years, it's going to cost you dearly. However, notwithstanding all these disappointments, I must keep in mind my duties and responsibilities as a trustee, particularly the duty of care. Two considerations weigh heavily on my mind. First, the fact that over the past two years, CPS Energy has committed itself to expending significant sums of money, begging the question, "How is all this spending going to be paid for?" As indicated earlier, I've opposed many of these major spending decisions, as evidenced by 4-1 votes. But given that these commitments have been made, can I in good faith oppose the funding of them? of them? As CEO Rudy Garza has said repeatedly, there are only two fundamental ways to pay, by taking on more debt, which is perilous and which I'm averse to doing, given CPS Energy's already out-of-kilter debt capitalization ratio, or by increasing the base rate on CPS Energy's customers. Second, management, whenever it formally proposes a base rate increase before us, or whenever it formally brings a base rate increase before us, sets CPS Energy up for further credit downgrades if that proposed hike is rejected. One of the areas I've been reproachful about the past three years is management's inability to restore our ratings from Fitch, Moody's, and S&amp;P to where they were before Winterstorm Yuri, or at the minimum to get the negative outlooks assigned by Fitch and S&amp;P upgraded to positive, or at the very least to stable. By moving forward with this rate hike, management has placed me in something of a bind, and just to borrow a cliche, I find myself on the horns of a dilemma. But considering the above begrudgingly, I'm going to go ahead and support the base rate increase that's before us. My responsibility as a trustee to make sure provisions are made so that bills get paid must outweigh my misgivings about the direction this company has been taking the past two years. Simply put, CPS Energy has been committed to a spending spree, and it has to be bankrolled. The piper must be paid, and the cost to CPS Energy's customers, as these every-two-year rate hikes are implemented, is going to be a high one. If different decisions had been made over the past two years, perhaps we wouldn't be where we are today, which is voting to increase the cost burden on our already beleaguered customers. And Madam Chair, finally, I respectfully ask that the reasoning behind my vote today be summarized in the minutes of today's meeting.
Absolutely, Mr. Steen. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Additional comments? Dr. Romero?
As usual, I have several questions. So I guess I'll start with Cory. You know I'm going to ask about Slide 24. I carry my bill around with me. I print it out and carry it around with me because I get confused sometimes about the different things that we pay for. And I think it's confusing, and we can talk all we want, but this is the common language between all of us and the customers, the shareholders. So I wish we could talk in this language more. And I know you put this in here. I wish it looked like the actual bill because I know there was a slide that looked like the actual bill. But this is what people look at. So can you just explain, when people see this on their bill, so service availability charge, we always see $9.10, and now we're all going to see $9.50. That's the same for every customer, correct?
Correct.
And then can you explain how energy charge, which is the second part of this bill increase, will change if this is approved?
Yeah, absolutely. And you're calling out those two sections there. The energy charge, it's a little small font there. You can see the per unit, 7.2% is increasing to 7.5% cents. Sorry. And that is, that's reflected there on the slide, and it's still multiplied by the same usage. But effectively, those two in combination are what we call as base rate, and those are responsible for, you know, recovery of those costs to run the business. They are separate and apart and uniquely different than the other components that you point out that we see in our bill, whether it be the fuel adjustment, which is the other line item, which is, and we've talked at length what that is, that's truly the fuel that we use to support our power plants or our distribution system if you're a gas customer. And then, of course, the other item, that's the regulatory adjustment component, which these are to pay for, as it sounds like, regulatory costs across the state that are imposed upon us. Again, we don't control those. So when we come to the community, we only ask for what we can control, and that's going to be the base rate, and those are going to be that, those two items. That service availability charge, which is a fixed charge on every customer's bill, it doesn't recover all of our fixed costs as a percentage, and we've talked about that. The energy charge, though, this is why we say your bill impact can vary, because it depends on what you use. You know, everyone's got a different usage, so it'll just be multiplied by a slightly larger factor that you can tell. Hopefully, that helps a little bit, trustee, and I appreciate you pointing that out. Dr. Romero?
It's helpful. I just kept thinking how we just keep saying "base rate," and if somebody looked at their bill, they're going to say, "I don't see anything that says 'base rate.'"
That's right. We will continue to call that out.
And I, there's a, there's a great page on the website that has your bill and shows you what every single item there is. And I have it marked, but today I was trying to find it from the homepage, and it was way too hard because you have to go from the homepage, then you go to understanding your bill, and then the next thing you click on, which is what threw me, is Bill Help, because I thought that meant, oh, that's for people who need help paying their bill. It can't be there, but it was there. So four clicks to get to how to read your residential bill, and I would like to know if we can get that down to two clicks?
We'll take that back.
And that it should not be under something that says "Bill Help," completely confusing.
Understood.
Okay. Thank you. I think my next questions are for Deanna.
Okay. The last time, you talked about how this, with this rate increase, that I think an additional 15,000 customers would qualify for ADP?
Yes, ma'am.
So can you go over again how we are, how we are paying for that? Is it in the rate increase itself that the other customers are paying?
Yes. I want to make sure with my financial friends.
Okay.
Both commercial and residential, not just residential. All customers pay for that.
I'm sorry. Dr. Romero, can you restate the question and then restate the response, please?
The question was whether the expansion of ADP to an additional 15,000 customers was, is being financed by the rate increase itself.
Yes, and it's going to be, on average, 80 cents per residential bill.
Which is already part of this.
Correct.
Real quick, can you, for those who may not know the acronym ADP, can you please state what ADP stands for?
Yes, ma'am. That is the Affordability Discount Program, and so it's, you get a standard discount on your electric bill or electric and gas, depending on which of your, of our services that you use, if you qualify.
Thank you. Sorry about that, Dr. Romero. I just want to make sure. Not everybody may know the acronym.
Now, I know that you are adding an additional qualification, which is energy burden.
Yes, ma'am.
To ADP, ADP. Sorry, now we got the acronym out, and I can say ADP. So I just want to make it clear. I know that the energy, the high energy burden is more likely with low-income households, but if you can just clarify that if you are a high-income household, you cannot qualify because of a high energy burden. You have to have the low income and the high energy burden.
Yes, ma'am. That is absolutely correct. We ask that you meet two qualifications, and the first of which is based on income.
It seems to me, I know that RAC had talked a little bit before about whether getting a home energy audit should be required before you can be enrolled in ADP, and I was never in favor of that. But as we add this additional qualification of the energy burden, which seems really closely related to the energy audit, which could help with that high energy burden, I wondered if you've considered, maybe it's our decision in the end, but if there's been any discussion about making Casa Verde enrollment be required now with ADP?
What we have said is that's one of the, if someone wants to qualify or does want to go through it, that's part of the bundled care approach. It would not be a requirement, but it's definitely part of the bundled care approach for when we do enroll a customer in ADP, that we don't just focus on the affordability discount program, but we focus on all other additional programs that they would qualify for, including the Casa Verde, starting with the energy assessment.
Okay. I just feel like if we're adding energy burden, that maybe Casa Verde should be required. I don't know if we'll ever get to discuss that or vote on it, but it just seems a little bit different to me than the others.
Thank you, ma'am.
Then, looking at ADP versus REAP, and I understand that, I see that the eligibility requirements are pretty much the same, and that ADP actually enrolls you in a discount every month, whereas REAP gives you a lump sum every year. I don't really understand why we have two different programs, and I'm just wondering if there's inefficiencies in running two separate programs like that, and if that's a place where we could save a little bit of money.
That's a great question. The one value of having REAP is that it's a nonprofit and that we can get donations, and it is specifically targeted for customers who have a past-due account, so the additional assistance they get is based on their need of, for a past-due account. And what we can do is look at what, what the cost is for, for REAP as well as ADP to see if there's some type of combination, but ADP is something that we fund solely here at CPS Energy, where REAP is an opportunity for others to make donations through, as a nonprofit.
Would it be impossible to keep that nonprofit status and let people make donations, but then use that money just for, to finance ADP instead of doing a whole separate payment system?
REAP is a separate entity, but we can see what the opportunities are. I would defer to, from a legal perspective, on what opportunities we have.
Okay.
Is it fair for me to say one is employee-driven, employee-community-driven, whereas the other one is funded, it's also, it's funded by taxpayers? They volunteer? Is that a better distinction?
ADP is paid specifically by the company where--
Oh, by the company. The other one is employees--
REAP is, is a combination of--
Of employee and community.
--donations from us as well as from others in the company.
I just wanted to maybe help with the distinction.
I was also going to give you a little bit of sizing, too, Dr. Romero. For the ADP program currently as exists today, it costs around $11 or $12 million in total for that program. Right now, the REAP has about $13 to $15 million in it right now. So size-wise, you know, there's, there's a difference in that, and the ADP gives you, you know, currently about $16 a month for customers, and, you know, to your point, on REAP, it's more of a lump sum. So, you know, the size of REAP could be eaten through pretty quickly if we didn't have kind of the ADP mechanism, but I think Deanna pointed out, good distinction, it is a non-for-profit with the joint partnership with the city and the county, which also helps for different elements of outreach that we'd otherwise wouldn't have. But it was just a little bit extra color of way to hit those points.
Okay. Thank you. I just have a couple more questions. I thought there was just a little bit of confusion at council, so I just want to clarify. You held a community resource fair in every single council district, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And those weren't town halls? There weren't really town halls, except for the online one that was last week.
We did have, we had community fairs, and there were some council members that specifically asked us to hold town halls as well, so we can follow up and give you that list if we haven't already provided it of where we did an actual town hall where a council member invited us versus where we had a community fair.
Oh, okay. No, I have the list. There were so many that it's hard to read.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know how much you did. And then I just had a couple of questions for Rudy. These are things that I, I know, I wouldn't feel comfortable being here today if I didn't know these already, but I wanted to give you a chance to address some things that I thought were brought up at the B session, and you didn't really get a chance to address them. So one was, this, this rate increase doesn't fix the grid. And so how does it help our citizens despite that?
Well, she, I try to be respectful of how the council members asked the question, so I answered it the way she asked it, yes or no. You know, there are a lot of things about the ERCOT grid that we don't control in San Antonio, but the more reliable CPS Energy is, the better off for the, for the ERCOT grid. So us being the best that we can be and being as long, you know, in generation as makes sense for our community, you know, we can't go overboard with that. We can't build all the generation the state of Texas needs in San Antonio and burden our customers with that cost in the hopes that we're going to get paid back. Just not reasonable. But there does make sense to be 20%, 25%, you know, reserve margin, which gives us flexibility for resiliency purposes and allows us to sell power back into the market to help with ERCOT's resiliency. So we do contribute to ERCOT's resiliency overall when we're resilient, but, but if we get into a Yuri-like event where there are wide-scale power outages across ERCOT, we can't solve for that. So when ERCOT is in distress, we are in distress as well.
Okay. Thank you. And the last one, you started talking a little bit about the costs that would be associated with keeping the Spruce plants running, all the other things that we already decided we weren't going to and all the reasons why we wouldn't want to, but you had started talking about how it's, it's not just a matter of saying, "Oh, we can just keep making all this money and generating all this power," that there are actually costs involved in keeping them going.
Yes, ma'am, and, and let me just make a comment about kind of the sequence of how, you know, you got to look at the big, at the whole picture of our generation plan. We will be bringing on, over the next five to 10 years, 5,000 megawatts of new capacity. You know, what we're placing is about 2,500 megawatts of old capacity, which includes the Spruce units. Spruce Two being converted to natural gas will keep that asset running and allow us to fully depreciate that asset. So take Spruce Two off the, off the table. That will continue running as a natural gas plant, and it's only about 60 days to, we basically build all the pipeline infrastructure we need to convert it to natural gas, trustee Steen, and in one outage, 60-day outage, you know, we convert it over to natural gas, and we'll have that work done before the Spruce One unit is retired. But to keep the Spruce One unit a viable unit long-term would have to invest $200 million. Utilities have to make these decisions all the time. Do you invest that type of environmental, you know, controls into a 30-year-old power plant, or do you do something different with that $200 million? It's a, it's a, it's an inflection point to keep it running for another 15, 20 years if the environmental laws don't change that make it even more difficult to run fossil fuel plants. You know, you'd be making a bet on whether, on the future of whether or not Spruce One's going to be able to run for another 20 years. So, so again, while there may be some, some underappreciated assets in Spruce, in the Spruce One decision, the cost it takes to keep it running in terms of environmental controls outweighs what you're gonna, what you're gonna write off. So financially, shutting Spruce One down is the right decision.
Okay. Thank you. I have some comments, but I'm done with my questions, so I can, yeah. You want me to do my comments, too? All right.
We have plenty of time, so please, go ahead. Comments? Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So I wanted to make some comments toward the end of explaining my, my vote, which will be in support. I don't want to sit up here and lecture anybody in the community, or certainly anybody here, about the right way to do things, but I want to explain my vote from my perspective, as I know my colleagues do. I take this role very seriously, and part of my responsibility is to explain my vote to the community, who at least indirectly place me in this position. I believe the role of trustees is to serve as the advocate for the shareholders of this community-owned utility, and I know that the leadership team and, and everybody who works here is committed to that end. These people are public servants who could be making a lot more money in the private sector. They are really brilliant leaders, and I'm really impressed with all the work that's, that's gone into this, and I have, I believe they have a special commitment to serve. That is not to say I automatically accept all information they present us, obviously. There's another part of our responsibility is to question the leadership team and to ask for improvements where we think they are needed. Clearly, the costs of this will have an impact on many customers, but the costs represented by this rate case are only one sliver of costs and potential costs. Furthermore, the benefit that those costs support cannot be left out of the equation. So I just want to mention two themes that justify my decision beyond simply saying that this increase in income is, is warranted through a cost-benefit comparison. Trying to find my other notes. The first thing I've been noticing lately is just this really complex web of connections among all the factors that have gone into, again, a very nuanced cost-benefit analysis that the leadership team conducted. Going back to the last rate increase, we saw a slide on that, and I, I agree that we would not fulfill the promises made at that time without continuing on as this plan outlines. That would be stranded costs in and of itself if we were to stop now. Another example is that this increase will help to fund our move to increase renewables per the approved generation plan, which in turn will bring the benefit of greater resiliency to adapt to the growing climate crisis, and we know that's a benefit that our citizens want. They've been very vocal about that. Another connection here is with the rating agencies. Somebody at council asked Ben Gersell, "What could help us to sustain or improve our ratings?" His answer was-- His answer was passing this rate increase. And that in turn allows our debt service costs to remain relatively low. And finally, one more example is what I just asked Deanna about, how the increased number of customers to be added to ADP is financed by this rate increase itself. I believe that reflects a strategic balance between having customers who are less burden support those who are, but without giving all of us too much to support. So I really appreciate that balance. There's a project and a report, it's called Powerless in the U.S. and it's from the Center for Biological Diversity, which seems strange, but that's where it's from and some other nonprofits. And it talks about the equity with the huge number of delinquencies across the United States and how some utilities are not paying enough attention to that. And some of the warning signs that they talk about are all things that we are not doing. So the things they talk about looking for is if, if a utility does not disclose delinquencies or termination of power, if there are high bonuses being given to the leadership team, if there has been no move to renewables, if there is no stop-out on disconnections for extreme heat, because many states have that for cold but not for heat, if there is a lack of payment plans. So we're doing all those things in the right direction according to that group whose mission right now is looking at the equity of higher bills and disconnections. The only thing that they suggest that we don't do is simply forgiving delinquencies. We can't do that unless the state constitution changes. So my second theme is how this rate increase keeps us on the crucial path to meeting the future head-on. I don't know what happened in previous years, but I don't think that challenge was considered seriously enough. Now it is, and I think it's really important since we know that climate change is coming at us faster and hotter and sometimes icier than we ever anticipated. Rising to the future is always cheaper and less disruptive in the long run than putting things on hold. For example, some people have asked why we can't just keep the Spruce plants running longer, and I believe we just got a really good answer for that. Even setting aside the climate crisis and their irresponsibility of delaying decarbonization, it just, it doesn't make financial sense. These are costs that would not sustain us into the future as investments and renewables will. Another important aspect of this is continuing to invest in and build ERP evolve. This gets us to among a multitude of other improvements, the all-important cybersecurity needs and more flexible billing methods that will give customers more power in managing their own energy burden. So my point is in all this is that a full analysis, a full analysis, which is what's been done, of the impact of a rate increase must include all of these factors. I believe that's been provided here. And in my opinion, a vote for this rate increase means support for a necessary investment in a sustainable and equitable future.
Thank you, Dr. Romero. Mayor or Dr. Mackey?
I concur with Dr. Romero. You just answered all my questions. You did a wonderful job explaining and this, and I concur with you. Thank you.
Mayor?
Sure, I did a very well-stated, you know, the cost of not investing in our community asset is that it won't be there when we need it, and we know the costs of that and the impacts of it. You know, I do remember us for years and years and years talking about the Flex Bundle Plan. Do you remember that phrase? That was a, I'll not misusing the phrase, but it was a black box in terms of what the future would be in terms of our energy mix. The difference is, we now actually have a plan. It didn't mean that when we were talking about Flex Bundle, we weren't going to have to invest in it. It just meant we didn't have the answers to the questions. We have done the work, the community has done the work to come up with the answers and the priorities that we have together as a community in an equitable manner. And this is the plan that we have to invest in to both need, meet the needs of our capacity demands, to ensure that we have a reliable and diverse energy portfolio, to make sure that we are also meeting our metrics on keeping this utility the most affordable in the state, if not the country. We're doing all those things. I appreciate Henrietta's comments. I'll work on the day, Henrietta. But you're right. I could take a survey in my neighborhood, I could take a survey in any of the hundreds of neighborhoods in the city, and there will be 0% of people who want this rate increase. But the reality is, what we want and what we need to do are sometimes different. If we do not invest in our utility, the cost of that will be a burden on every single household in this community, most dramatically being our lowest-income, most vulnerable members of our community. Last thing, I don't want it to go uncorrected. A vast majority of the RAC, which is a reflection of this community, wanted a STEP program. There was a group of folks within the RAC that said, we want to move on from STEP, but a vast majority wanted some type of STEP program to continue. How much was a debate, but we wanted a STEP program. And I will say that this new STEP program finally allows lower-income households to benefit from it. And that's not a, that's not a temporary benefit either, because the majority of those folks who are benefiting are seeing home efficiency improvements that will allow their energy bills to decrease. That's really important. And making sure that lower-income residents are no longer subsidizing those who have a capital to access those efficiency programs is important to the city council. It's important to every member of the community, the RAC, and I am very happy that it's in place. So again, we have a plan. If we want to stick to the plan, that means we've got to make the proper investments as a community and, again, not an easy vote, but it's important that we make sure our utility can stand on its, on its feet. So, and I do want to say thank you to the CPS Energy staff, the folks on the front lines, all the way to the leadership team. You've done a great job. And this utility is in a stronger position, much stronger position than when we started this process three or four years ago. So that's all from me, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I do have a couple of questions. I want to start with the opening slide, I believe, Ms. Lena Ball. I just want to make sure we can go over to the opening slide. I believe it was a slide that had spoke about aligning our strategic financial plan with community needs. I mean, I have questions yet, but I at least wanted to start with that slide. I think it was the other one before that. Okay, maybe not. Okay. So I will tell you that I was a freshman when I started seeing a major, start, became very aware that there was obviously a disconnect between what I was hearing in the community and what was happening at CPS. And so I know there's a lot of reference to the past. And I want to say that I do believe that this process has honored the past. As we've listened to the future, I will tell you that I'm very mindful of everybody's feedback on this board. I mean, I will be the first to tell you that it's easier to be a trustee than it is to be a chairman. I've learned a lot, I've grown a lot this year. I will tell you that, you know, I'm an executor, I'm a CEO, and so oftentimes, your job is to develop a plan and to make sure you execute and make some really tough decisions, even when they're not popular. And I will tell you that I do apologize to some of my colleagues when I've had to lean in really hard to execute what I heard as a freshman and when I started hearing it as a role as a vice chair and then hearing it as a chairman. I attended the B session. I've attended many meetings, both online and offline. Here are a couple of the common themes. We need a community, we need a community advocate. We've got to be careful, more burden to less fortunate individuals. We've got to be very thoughtful about that. Don't forget our seniors. I've also heard some, some very conservative point of views of why should we pay for other sins? We need to be, we need to be more aggressive in how we collect. I've also heard many times, you know, our key metrics, you know, are not going in the direction that they should. The need for third-party assessment, the need to move away from coal, the need to be flexible in the generation mix, the need to, you know, provide more end-users with more power, whether it's features and functions, the need to advertise in Spanish and English, the need to go into the community. There's been so many things. And I will tell you that I'm a small business owner and I wish I would have had an advocate when my interest rates went up several times in a year. It was really, really tough. I will tell you, I could empathize with large organizations and small organizations and even my employees that were struggling to try to figure out how we as a company were going to offset all of a sudden these costs that we could not recuperate from our customers. So there's a lot of things. I live in the poorest district. I see it every day. But I will tell you a lot of things that I'm proud of. I am proud of that we challenged the marketing team. The marketing team was challenged from making sure every time there was feedback from Dr. Romero about being user-friendly, making sure information was there. We were challenged, Mr. Steen wanted to make sure the calculator was there, to make sure that people understood. It got done. We were challenged to be creative in how we were out there in the community. I will tell you, I would walk into HUB 30, I believe it was number 37, the biggest, the most popular HUB on Southwest Military Drive, I think it's 36. You walk in and you see immediately CPS, we can help you with the little white bees. I walked into the workforce centers this year and every workforce center had a brochure. Walked into the Dollar General store and I got a, there's a receipt, how we can help you. I will tell you, they've been challenged in different capacities by different board of trustees and you heard the call. I will tell you that I'm really proud of the work of RAC and the outcomes that came out of it, some of the feedback. We've incorporated that into the plan that we have for Vision 2027. Thank you for that. You know, again, a lot of meaningful conversations. Yes, the format was changed and how we run meetings today. But I will tell you something that I'm most proud of as well. We have a process at CPS under the current leadership, which is myself, that if any board member, any board member wants an ask of information that wasn't clear, wants a report, I get a list. I get a list. Every month we go over it and I'm like, please address that trustee's request. Please make sure it's closed out. Move it into a committee. So I will tell you that I hear you and I've incorporated, as a matter of fact, 30 action items were closed this year of requested information by trustees. So we have increased transparency. We have increased listening in different formats and listening to our community. But why I want you back to this, to this slide is, I kind of want you, you've walked us through some, a couple of key areas. I've kind of highlighted these areas. And so part of working with you as a chairman has been, one, slides need to be improved. They need to be simple, to the point, and meaningful content. So thank you very much. But if you can share something that you have not pointed out or that any of our colleagues has not pointed out right today, that has been delivering a commitment that wasn't there a year ago or two years ago?
Yes, thank you for the question. I will say that I think everything on this slide, there were some, there are many of these areas that we had not had a plan for, right? So everything on this slide, in some, in some nuanced way is new and is something that, you know, we have, have delivered on. I think one that we've had a lot of discussion on, but I think is so important, Deanna and her team have really focused on identifying at a customer level where energy burden is most pronounced, defined what energy burden looks like for our organization. They benchmarked. And really, I think that one in particular provides us a universe of folks that we can continue to have additional outreach, enroll those customers in our programs. And as we were talking about STEP, you know, there is a perspective that, well, if you're low-income, you're low-usage, and that's not the case. Identifying these folks who have that energy burden so that we can get them connected with Casa Verde and be able to help drive that energy need out of their homes. It does a couple of things. One, helps us by reducing demand, right? And it also helps our customers, in particular, those that have that high energy burden, to eliminate that energy loss in perpetuity, like the mayor said. So there are a lot of things on this slide that the team has been working on for the last two years, but I think that's one that is really important to identify. It's us getting intentional about those in greatest need so that we can, on a personal level, target them for programs, get them enrolled, and help, help families who are struggling to pay their energy bills.
Thank you. If, the next question is for Cory. If we can go to the slide about past due accounts. Cory, this data has been presented several different ways, and I know you and I have talked to length about it. The need to, to add, I guess, to focus and, because again, I was trying to address, working with you indirectly, how can we communicate more effectively, not just to my colleagues here, but to the community about this? So one quick question. If, what is the average non-collection outside of this specific focus on collecting debt? What is the historical percentage of not collecting?
Okay, past due accounts, between 10 or 20 million dollars historically?
So, and so historically, we do non-recovables about 20 million, correct?
That'd be a high, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so walk me through this slide once more. And so if I understand this correctly, so 42.7 million has, will be written off no matter what. Most of these, maybe a small business went out of business, someone moved and we can't get ahold of them. What are other non-recovable activities that there would be in this bucket?
Yeah, I mean, that's mainly it, because we, there's a large effort we're required to do in terms of making sure we recover dollars owed to us. So it takes time. But by the time you get in this bucket, you're inactive because we can't find you and, you know, to your point, the business or the individual is just gone. And so that's that middle one.
Okay. And so again, 83.1 has been engaged during a role in some payment plan. Now, these payment plans is not, someone doesn't have to qualify for the most part, like low-income, it's just as long as they're open and willing to, and they go into some kind of bucket for a plan. Is that correct?
Yeah, I don't think it's a qualified, but they do have to make an initial payment when they sign up, correct? Yeah. So they are-
It's, again, there's no, there's not like a major barrier to have access to some kind of payment plan. Is that fair to say?
We want people to get on those and it's, it's good news for everyone when we get on.
So again, back to where many of us on this, I was going to say diocese, our concern is not just to make sure that the 83.1 is focused on, that we continue to have that dialogue and make sure that we're good, is the 49.7 million, is correct?
Yeah, we want to focus on that. And if that number got down to your 10 to 20 million dollars that I mentioned earlier, then you're kind of in the historical space.
Okay.
So that's kind of, if you think about goals, right?
Right.
That's kind of where we want to get to, to kind of be in, more in line with historical norms, give or take.
Addition to collections, knocking on doors, what other type of activities are we focused on for the 49.7 million?
I'll turn to Deanna, yes?
Thanks, Cory. The other part is really seeing what additional assistance could be out there. So we've been able to partner with our over 200 partners in the community to connect our customers with up to 80 million dollars in financial assistance. So as Dr. Romero pointed out, we don't have the opportunity to forgive bills, but what we can do is maximize the additional dollars that we get from the federal government or from the city, whoever has dollars, like heat dollars, to be able to maximize that. And the next best thing that we can do is really set up a customer on the budget payment plan. So by helping, helping customers have an average bill amount each month and then spreading out their past due is, and alleviate as much as we can on that burden, the better off that we are.
Okay. This is more a CIO question, but as I hear, I hear about what we've already done and where we're going, there's a lot of- There's a lot of conversation about how do we use data, how to use predictive data. Specifically, as we're modernizing our system, something that's become a real popular topic is how do we use artificial intelligence to be able to interfere sooner, to retain those that are on a payment plan? And then how do we use that specific technology to be able to do the engage or the at-risk connections? Can you talk a little bit more, and this would be for the CIO, some potential ways that we can leverage the modernization of our systems to be more proactive and take some of the things into consideration that have been brought up by our colleagues?
Yes, ma'am, thank you for the question. You know, today, we are already leveraging some of those technology capabilities. In fact, a few months ago, we implemented a proactive analytics model that helps us invest our dollars to replace underground cables before they reach a point of failure and actually, you know, end up interrupting service for our customers. So we have a lot of those capabilities in-house today, and wherever we can deploy those to introduce efficiencies from an operational perspective, which also yields savings, we certainly prioritize those things. As we look ahead, evolve our digital transformation will really open up many more of those opportunities. One of the things that we struggle with today is how disparate a lot of our data is, and that is largely because of the complexity of our technology ecosystem. So as we execute our strategy, we'll be able to start introducing a lot of these, you know, forward-thinking capabilities that will not only create a lot of the benefits to our customers that we talk about in terms of optionalities, optionality in programs, but will also allow us to do things much more efficiently as an organization by maximizing the data to improve our operations.
Eventually, would one of the features make it possible for individuals to tier rates to be, or just usage, their usage mix? Is it in the future where an end-user would be empowered to say, today, I want to use more solar versus, you know, electricity and battery storage? Is that where we're going? Where users would be more empowered, potentially, to be able to have this type of, again, power at their hands?
So our goal is absolutely to provide that information to our customers, right? So as recently as the last couple of weeks we've been talking about in the future, when we want to deploy some of the new rate structures that you just described, how do we make sure that we're giving that information in real time to our customers? And that potentially could include the mix of generation that is fueling their particular home. Another key element of that is making sure that when they do add different options for generation, such as battery or rooftop solar, that we can get notifications whenever they're making those decisions and proactively reach out to them about different products and services that we may be able to enroll them in.
And what are we going to take into consideration for those who may not, you know, we talk about the digital divide, we talk about digital literacy. What potentially, and what are we going to consider for those individuals as we modernize our system? Are there some thoughts already about how we plan to make sure there's a right mix of introducing technology, but at the same time, being very aware that not everybody has consistent access or may not have access, especially our seniors?
Yeah, absolutely. So one of the things that is very much a part of our digital strategy is empowering our entire workforce with the technology solutions that we're putting in place. So when they're in front of our customers interacting with them, and Deanna and her organization, our crew teams do an amazing job of getting out in the community. But also, our walk-in centers, making sure that we're making those experiences available for our customers and meeting them where they are, whether that is, you know, one of our crew team members, you know, knocking on one of our customers' doors and being able to pull out a mobile device that allow us to provide access to that information, or when customers come into our walk-in centers, making sure that we're able to get them to those same outcomes, even if they may not have access to the technology in their home.
For answering those questions. I have one last question. I'm not sure who can answer this. So we see an increase of grant funding opportunities as a way for new revenue streams. Who can speak to that?
If you can shed some light of what's driving the access to grant funding?
Thank you for the question. There has been, over the past couple of years, significant federal funding through the BIL as well as funding specific to energy transition. And so we are actively monitoring and looking for opportunities, grant opportunities, predominantly at the federal level right now, that map those opportunities to the projects and programs we're trying to deliver for our customers. So there are projects that we already have in our capital plan that we can seek funds and get either matching or direct pay. And so we currently have three grants in flight, and we're building additional grant opportunities as we speak. We just formed a team around that.
I know during the city council session, there was a point brought up by Councilwoman District 7. And so she talked about the eligibility. If we could increase the eligibility, there was two programs. Do you recall that conversation?
I could go back and look at my notes. I think we were talking about REAP and ADP, if that is.
And so she suggested if there was consideration to change, to move it up for people to be more, to become eligible, that ours was different compared to the other one. Do you remember the percentage?
I do, and this is subject to checking from others, but I think we were talking about REAP and ADP. But I think REAP, we were at 125% of the federal poverty line. And there was a discussion about, is there an opportunity to look at that threshold and see if we might be able to adjust it?
I was really interested on that feedback, and I thought it was really good. And so I just wanted to see what her thoughts were on that.
Madam Chair, there's a conversation about, you know, how we might expand, you know, affordability, the affordability program, and REAP, for that matter, in terms of income eligibility, which I think is a worthwhile exercise for us to look at. So, you know, that's probably something we'll have a conversation with the board about, you know, going forward, that will allow us to maybe do some targeted outreach for seniors in particular. That's where the council's really been focused on. But, you know, obviously, that's a conversation that we need to have with the board as we move forward with.
Thank you. I found that conversation very meaningful when we were there in the audience. And so I'm just going to conclude. I think, again, all my colleagues, including our mayor, have provided some really excellent feedback of why they're supporting it. I'm very mindful that we all have a very specific point of view and that everybody here has worked really, really hard to arrive at where they're at. I'm really proud of everyone here. And it's not proud because of the actions that potentially will take place. What I'm most proud of is the dialogue. This is one of the most engaged board of trustees, and I'm honored to serve with everybody who's here. And it's been a lot of work. I will tell you that my experience as a freshman, as far as how we work with staff, is day and night. It is day and night that we get to ask tough questions, that we get to challenge them, and they've been responsive. Yes, like Dr. Romero says, sometimes we get presentations, and sometimes we're like, hmm. But that's our responsibility to ask those questions. And so thank you for being so open to doing things differently. And then the only other thing I have to add is, you know, I do believe that we need more feedback from our end-users. And I know it's sometimes, as mentioned, tough for someone to take time off to be here. But I also believe that my advocate is the mayor that I vote for, the advocate that serves on city council. I look to my council for guidance, and then I look to my board for guidance. And then we look through the democratic process for that consumer feedback, whether it's, again, knocking on doors, hosting community outreach, hosting evening public input sessions. And so, you know, I personally will continue to find ways that we can get more engagement of our end-users. And so, again, just thank you to everyone, and this concludes, I believe. And then, oh, Mr. Steen has some addition. No, no, I think Mr. Steen has additional comments. Go ahead, sir.
I think you know where this, obviously, where this board is having. So then your next step is the city council. And I know that when you were at city council, that Councilman Mark White asked you about Spruce 1. And that was the answer you gave about the $200 million?
Yes, sir.
But I wanted to ask you about something. At our February 28, 2022 board meeting, and Dr. Romero, it was your first meeting as a trustee. This board approved your request to spend $50 million to build a three-acre pond to hold spruce sledge waste. You recall that?
Yeah, because we can't keep running it until up through 2028 without getting that work done. So you don't do that pond, then we'd have to shut Spruce down because we couldn't get it permitted.
And it had to be completed by September 2023, and it's completed, it's.
Benny, come up here and give an update. I know we had some delays on that work, but I think we're done with it.
I just want to pause real quick and confirm. You believe that this discussion is necessary to make your vote on the rate case?
It's fine, Mr. Steen.
Well, I'm.
Just answer the question, baby.
Councilman Mark White is.
Hold on, this is a governance requirement. I simply asked the trustee if he wanted to continue this discussion for the purpose of voting on the rate case. That is my obligation. It's not discretionary. It's to ensure compliance with the Open Meeting Act.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. I'm with it.
Rudy, you are correct. The project is complete, and it's in service.
And so we had that requirement where the EPA was saying you have to do it by, what did I say, September 2023? But these other things, this ELG project, the SCR system, you know, the other things, why are we given so much leeway in terms of having to complete those?
Why aren't we given?
Why are we?
Well, we're not. In order to run on past, in other words, the compliance date, we would have to make that investment.
And what is the compliance date?
Benny? I think it's 2028.
I think this is, this might be helpful to you to get it to here because, you know, perhaps Councilman White seems to be interested in it.
Councilman White and I have had this conversation, sir. So, you know, I'm not, I can deal with Councilman White at council, but we've had this conversation.
Yes, sir, you are correct. We have to complete the SCR installation we're anticipating by 2028, whether that unit was converted to gas or remained on coal. The ELG work would have to be completed, again, by 2028. It'd be '27. There's been some movement on that rule if we were going to continue on coal operation.
And are we getting, are we getting, we have to ask for that delay? Or is it, how does, is that being granted to us that we don't have to do it until those?
So in 2025, we're required to give notice if it is our intent to shut down our units on coal or continue operation.
Thank you, I won't belabor it.
Yes, sir.
Any additional comments by any trustee or mayor or CEO, anybody? All righty. Again, thank you for the comments, the discussion. And so here we go. Do I have a motion to approve the 4.25?
We already have a motion in the second, ma'am, so we're ready.
There is a second?
Yeah, we already have it.
It's already happened.
All right, roll call.
Trustee Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Trustee Steen?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Chair?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, so we had the regulatory asset approved, and just to make sure we're clear, because there was a lot of conversation. And then we've had the approval of the 4.25 base increase.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, item number, let's see where I'm at. I'm losing my space here. Six, resolution on base increase in multi-year rate plan. Where we did that vote?
No.
No, we didn't. Regulatory.
Moved to approve the resolution of the base rate increase in multi-rate plan and regulatory asset.
This is the motion to approve the resolution.
That's what we just did, I think.
This is to approve the resolution.
Just the resolution.
Is there a second to approve the resolution?
Let's make sure, just for procedural reasons, that we're clear, because I want to make sure everybody's clear.
This is a motion to approve the resolution that was included in your board packet and posted online. There's no changes to the resolution. I have a motion from Dr. Mackey. Is there a second?
It opened for discussion? No clarity, no clarification? Go ahead, Mr. Steen.
This was, sorry. The resolution was changed on Friday. And I'm trying to understand. I read through it, and it talked about a multi-year plan, but why was it necessary to change the agenda, to repost the agenda on Friday?
You want to clarify, you want to answer that?
Yes, so as is clear, in the changes to the agenda, there was a change to the naming of Agenda Item 5 and Agenda Item 6, to be more clear. There were changes to the language of the resolution. I would say no material changes, but additional background was included in the resolution for clarity and transparency.
That's right, Mr. Steen. What happened was when I kept looking at the agenda originally, it said base increase rate and then multi-year rate plan. And so I felt it was redundant. So we just remove rate from base increase. And then it is what it is today, which is rate increase and multi-year rate plan. But none of the key information was changed.
And I compared them, and of course, none of the resolutions were changed, and it was just adding like five recital paragraphs, you know, the ones that begin with whereas. And so I'm just wondering, it seems like that was a lot of trouble that was gone to on Friday.
Well, but I think part of it is, again, just making sure that everything is, I mean, clear and concise. That's it. We're just really working hard to make sure all the information is accurate. It means everybody's, you know, feedback that we get often. Any other comments? Thank you, Mr. Steen. So we're back to roll call.
Trustee Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Trustee Steen?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Chair?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Resolution is approved?
Okay, item number seven, which is review action items?
Yes, ma'am. Of the pending action items, there is one that remains open, and that is the request from trustee Steen to memorialize the basis of his vote on Agenda Item Eight at the October 31, 2023 board meeting. That's included in the board minutes that are expected to be approved at the December 18 regular board meeting. All of the remaining action items are closed, and with respect to today, I had three action items that I recorded. I have a request from trustee Steen on Agenda Item Number Five to record the basis of his votes in the minutes. That will be included in the minutes that I expect to be approved at a future regular board meeting. The second action item I have is on Agenda Item Five. The vice chair requested an easier way to get to the Read Your Bill section from the homepage, less than two clicks. The team has already started working on that, so I expect to have that completed shortly. And item number three was also on Agenda Item Five, and the vice chair requested that there is consideration or evaluation of REAP and ADP consolidation for efficiency purposes, so we'll begin consideration of that.
And I think, just to build upon that, mine is the consideration of the qualifications to see how we can align that.
Yes, ma'am. I added a fourth action item from the chair, and that is consideration of qualification requirements for ADP and for REAP.
Yes. Okay, so now we're going to convene to executive session. Item number eight, attorney-client matters, 551071, and competitive matters, 551086. If you can please take us to executive session.
Yes, ma'am. At this time, this board is going to recess and do executive session, discuss matters that have been duly posted under several provisions of Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including those you just reiterated. At the conclusion of executive session, the board will reconvene in open session, continue the meeting. It is 5:19 as we go to executive session.